Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on June 10th, 2020 at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on June 4th, 2020, at 2:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum present at this time at the boardroom. We have myself, Director Friedman, Director Houston, and Director Avalos. On Zoom, I believe we have Dr. Lallan? Not yet? Okay. However, we still do have a quorum at this time. Director Starkey and Director Dr. Lallan are not on Zoom or in the board at this time. At this time, we have Dr. Lallan joining the meeting. So I'd like to go ahead. We do have a full quorum. I'd like to go ahead and proceed with item two, the Fledge of Allegiance.
....................................
The Heavenly Father Jesus Christ, please bless us this day and let us, you know, have your guidance to continue to just practice our, you know, health and safety in these turbulent times and just help us to just give us strength to social distance and let's go ahead and just continue our meeting safely. In the city's thanks name, in Jesus Christ's name.
Charles? I'd like to proceed to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments.
Hey Scott, this is Adam. I just want to make note that I'm here.
Yes, we did. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to include staff, board, public?
I have one.
Yes.
On one of the requests that Dr. Lallan had requested at that meeting, on that sign that Omar was trying to work it out with the manager. She left on vacation, so it was longer than what I expected. I thought she was gonna be able to do it right away, and she said that she has upper management, that she has to make sure that they approve it first before taking it off. And we're working on it at this time. It's been a little while until something happens. That's what I wanted to mention on that item.
Thank you for your follow through and keeping us updated. Anyone else like to add comments, share anything? Let's move along to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for May 27th, 2020.
I'll have to abstain.
For the record, Director Houston abstains. Is there?
I move to accept.
Motion for approval made by Dr. Lallan?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos. Are Avalos in favor? They are?
Thank you.
Let's move along to item five, General Manager's Report. Carlos?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I just want to bring an update that the county has gone up on the counts of positives on the COVID-19. Yesterday, as of yesterday, we had 28 more. And then today, it went up to 32 more. So it's been going up and we've been practicing our protocols, especially the safe distancing and wearing the mask, everything that we're supposed to do. We've been exercising and trying to emphasize it daily with our employees. We still have the front office locked up unless there's new accounts that they need to come in and sign paperwork. But as of now, it's still closed. The window is where they do the payments, and that's open. So I just wanted to let the board know that it's hitting pretty close here to home. So hopefully that we can keep exercising that and that we ourselves as administration exercise that and show the other employees, you know, to be on the alert. And most of all, we try to emphasize employees' safe distancing and being aware of the COVID-19 because their families are right next to them all the time. So as long as they're safe, they can, you know, be not getting that virus. So that's all I have right now on that one. And we are okay. We are, Mary's been working with a new form because we opened up vacation for the employees because they've been wanting to see if we could open the vacation. So we did. So now, you know, when they leave out of town, it's a concern for us that they're coming back from somewhere that we don't know where they've been. So we got like a questionnaire form that we're coming up. We're meeting tomorrow morning again on it and trying to work it out by Friday. I think there's a couple of employees that are wanting vacation for the weekend. But we'll have this form and it's screening, you know, like simple questions like making sure that they weren't involved with a lot of people or, you know, trying to prevent this virus from spreading within our system here. So that's all we're working on. And I want to thank Mary for that. She's been doing a good job on the spreadsheet. So I don't think this one needs board approval, but it'll, just wanted to mention it to the board. Minor questions. On the other one that I have here, November 2020 elections.
If I may say, since that is a new form we made, maybe just have council kind of look at it to make sure everything is kind of by the code.
Sure.
All that sort of stuff.
Once we finish.
Questions and stuff, when you're asking, you know, let's just make sure we're on the right protocol. In-house form. Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for that advice. On the next one that I have, November elections, I did put some information in there that we need to look at and make sure that, I believe, July 18th is the first day of the file. And then you follow through and then you have 30 days after that. And make sure that if you all have any questions, call me up and I can help you with, you know, the filing and applying for that positions that you have. Then the next one, the Texas Water 2020. I wanted to mention that it's going to be a virtual through Zoom, the same as we're doing right now. I don't think it'll be as much fun as when you go out there and visit with a but it's gonna be credited.
You'll learn as much.
So if you have any questions on that one too, make sure you contact me and I'll help you out and figure out registrations. I think there's several already in there registered. So they're giving us a break, I guess. If you do the virtual, you get one or two more employees that can go for free. So it's all good. If you all have any questions, let me know on that one. And that's all I have for right now.
Yes. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Moving along to item six, Director of Operations Report. Robert?
Gentlemen, the report is pretty much at that of last month. It did go up a little bit more by about one-third from last month. We had 200 callouts, the service calls. But there is a big difference from May of last year. May of last year, we had 446 callouts and service calls. And the big difference was in work on the meter boxes and informational and then pulling meters. And those three pretty much had to deal with the meter project. So since we finished that meter project, that's slacked down quite a bit. And that was a big difference as far as the distribution was concerned. And the collection side, it did go up. And the big increase was in preventive maintenance. And of course, preventive maintenance deals with collections going out to the to the manholes and pouring in Microsoft to dilute, if possible, the grease that goes through there and to help deodorant. And that was, that's a big increase there. That's a big difference there. But everything else remains pretty much the same. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Will this report eventually reflect our what do you call it, the guy that's going out for the grease?
Pre-treatment.
The pre-treatment? It does in the sense that it deals with preventive maintenance and the, well, it's not going to specifically show that, but I can get a report for you all. He has started to meet with some restaurants and pretty much they've been asking him on the size of the grease traps and what is required and so on. He found a formula and according from TCEQ deals with plumber's code that he has given to some of the restaurants so they can look at their grease traps and size them up to what they should be.
Could we just include an extra line in here?
Is there a particular item that you want to look at or just overall the restaurants that he's made contact with? Because some of it deals with the cleaning of the list stations as I have presented before. And they're doing a pretty good job on that.
Let me ask Victor, you've got a little feedback on this. How do you think we ought to?
Well, there's different ways that you can approach it. I know he's been shadowing the health inspectors on the island several days now. He watches what they do. When it comes to the grease trap itself, they've kind of tag teamed it, if you will. And he's actually, he's some owners already on how to improve. We also have an establishment that came in that he's been working on, on adding a grease trap to the living passage, I think. So it's work in progress. I think if he gives you the number of restaurants I've talked to, whether they've complied or in the process of complying, I think that'd be very helpful for you guys.
Just don't mention the names of the businesses directly. Just mention a lot block or something, but not the name of the business directly.
Thank you.
Will do that. The question?
Thank you very much. Let's move along to item seven, District Engineers Report.
All right. So the first item I have is the Antibooty wastewater treatment plant discharge through the Burning Center. I went ahead and provided an exhibit just so you kind of know what's going on in the area. So basically, we have, I don't know if you can tell from the driveway where the Burning Center's at, down at the exhibit. And then right adjacent to the North Star Sewer Plant, then we have the AEP substation on the other side of our sewer. So basically, you know, we have our ration basins, our sludge drying bed. And then just directly to the west of the sewer plant is our wastewater treatment plant effluent discharge location. And so that's our point, you know, for all practical purposes, where their outfall is located. And that's where they regulate the discharge. And so as we have that ponded areas, it's been created by a gate that's been installed by the Burning Center where there's that one callout location of gates maintain elevation of freshwater wetland. So that's this freshwater tidal wetland where our copper testing with dispatch renewal has caused a trace flag where they want to put a monitoring requirement. And in three years, we'd actually have a copper limit added to the permit. And so basically, we did have our meeting with Reese Nichols on Tuesday. We got an update on this coordination from our previous approvals to try to get this straightened out. And we got some more information on this water effects ratio. Yeah, I guess these are just kind of some pictures just to give you an idea of what's going on out there. But at the end of the day, since there's wetland being set up, there's nothing upstream for dilution. So we have 100% dilution available in terms of any kind of analysis that we have to provide. And so what we're gonna do is we have this water effects ratio that the state had asked us to do. And usually what that effort will do is it'll multiply the copper more or less by two. Like, so, you know, it'll become less stringent because we'll have far less much copper to stay within our client's requirement. And so with that condition in place, for the five tests that we had ran when this renewal process, like in the past couple of months, would have stayed below that limit if it was multiplied by two. So we're on the right track to do with this water effects ratio to get a less stringent requirement, you know, in our permit. It's not necessarily going to go away. But they did give us a request or some, we had to do some composite samples to kind of continue that study. And so we got an estimate from ANALAB. Well, essentially, it's going to be a 24-hour composite sampling. We have to do one the first month and then do one the second month. And then we also have to do some toxicity testing just to establish some data for what the copper is actually, how it's affected the wetland area. And so, you know, that's some additional cost about, you know, the, we got a preliminary quote for the lab. It's another $18,500 to get that testing done.
So the copper monitoring required causes going into the wetlands versus discharge right in the bay?
Yeah, because if we were in the bay, we'd be able to mix and have a dilution of, say, 8% versus our dilution at the wetlands 100%. So it becomes much more stringent. That's what's hurt. But at the same time, you know, we've agreed to participate with the Burning Center. I don't think relocating the outfalls is an option in this case. It's a blue sample feature that happened. I don't know if there's any other questions on. That's where we're at.
I had just a couple of questions which I had raised already. And one of them was about the cost, the additional cost of testing. And if we have to pay for that. The other is just, I'm not sure if it's necessary to update. I guess this is our agreement with Burning Center. This is the original agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe there was some concern about, I think from Mr. Galvane, that how the discharge has been contained. Is that a way to say it? And whether, because we didn't do any of that. Okay. So I guess the issue that I'm trying to raise is a liability for us with the new changes coming on board.
If the state requires.
What's that? The testing?
Well, yeah. I mean, the copper may trigger more stringent, like major improvements that would happen. So there's something we need to be watching out for.
And if we have to pay for it, that's okay too. That's fine too. But I guess what I'm wondering is if this is a 2002 agreement, if there's anything, any changes, any concerns we should have. I know the concern for Mr. Galvane was how that effluent got captured or encased to provide the wetland property there.
Basically, the cattails kind of stopped at all is what did it. It was kind of a natural buildup of the cattails that kept it. It does seep into the bay, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
And well, that's okay. And eventually those cattails will probably have to be removed by us to be able to let that discharge go out. Well, and this is, and this is why I'm.
But you're right. It's not, well, it's not state. Sorry.
Yes. So I would like for our attorney to look at this, look at the property if necessary, look at the concern that Mr. Galvane has about the, how it was just captured there, which is fine. I'm just saying, if there's any liabilities for us in the future, I would like to eliminate those. And that would require going and looking at the site, looking at what possible liabilities in the future could be created by capturing that water in that area and just release us of that liability.
Or maybe the amount of contaminants going in there, staying in there, maybe cause something.
Well, we're gonna do our job of testing the discharge and making sure we're in compliance with TCEQ. And if we have to pay for that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that there's some unforeseen liability in the future with this partnership and making sure that this resolution and this agreement that we have is thorough and protects the district.
Everything you're saying is correct. I fully understand. But our responsibility is that the discharge might go on going forward. That's just our, the district's responsibility. Which, yes, what new things are creating go forward, yes.
But that's, yeah. Because there's going to be expansion. There's going to be new projects coming on board in that area. And I want to make sure that our discharge is not going to be held liable for anything, any unforeseen.
Do we get any, I'll call them filtration credits? I use. Basically, it's a marsh filter.
Yeah. That's, we're not, I mean, none of that's been, you know, none of that's been taken into account with our permit requirements for monitoring. Because, yeah, all that's downstream of our monitoring point. So I guess, yeah, I guess that was the first point. The next one is Laguna Motory Water District Surveys for the 2021 Regional Water Plan. Yeah, Black and Beach is under contract with the state to do the five-year update for the regional water plan. And they had sent an email requesting that they update the surveys that they had on file. And so I just included them, the engineer's report, so we're all aware of what's being submitted, you know, for the regional improvement of what type of date. And so for some reason, in the 2017 implementation plan, they had a brackish groundwater decalination plant. And so on that one, I just basically showed how we've done the activity on it. And it's not about that. So that was, that was pretty cut dry on that job. And so for the next one, it was the local reuse project, which is, you know, the efforts we've made at the Port Isabel Water Reclamation Facility. And so, you know, we have completed that work at the sewer plant itself. And so the funds expended to date for that effort have been $10,685,000. And for this job to get to the finish line, which is going to be the advanced water treatment facility, that would bring the ultimate project cost up to $17,545,000. So that advanced treatment level is, you know, the additional $7 million to get to that point. And, you know, we do have a Title 16 eligible project which allows, gives us the opportunity for a cost share where it's 25% grant, 75% local, if that becomes an option. So, you know, it's just basically get the region implant up to speed, the region implant, you know, consistent with, you know, where we're standing. And then, you know, lift station upgrades, I mean, that's kind of helping get that peak flow to the water plant. I mean, to the sewer plant in the event that we start capturing it to put it back in our, you know, total system. So that was just, you know, that's basically what we're doing on base. And then this is just a couple of pages out of the feasibility study done by Rolo at 2015?
Black and Beach.
All right.
On the new market part of the review. Are you saying we spent $10,000 on that?
The headworks and every, all the improvements, the rehab we did.
Why is that included in the pile of reviews?
It was the water quality improvements to the secondary treatment. It's basically to deliver a consistent quality or a consistent effluent to the MFRO, you know, that would be actually sending the water back to the reservoir. So it was basically a water quality component of the reclamation on the sewer side of it.
I think that there was some discussion about bringing the, using that effluent.
Right.
Yeah. And that's the only reason the difficulty with using that effluent for reuse is it requires a separate disinfectant that it would not necessarily require if we ran only raw water and salt. That's, and so I guess it's an option for possibly doing it in the future if money would allow, but not included.
Yeah. I mean, the next step is the decalination component and then, you know, the additional log removal credits would need to send it back to our distribution. This is kind of the recommended project description from the Rolo study. Because the numbers that Black and Beach has on file are higher than what's in our report. So as in terms of cost, I didn't modify the cost estimates that Black and Beach has already updated for our core projects. And so these are just some of those of, you know, where we're at on our end of things. You know, we resolved, there were requirements for these to be flowing through the Garcia Doughty. And that first bullet point was what we completed in the, you know, through this construction contract that was finished in February 2015. That's basically, yeah, on the second page, it's just more of the recommendation information. Out of the law. All right. And then now the last survey was just some timelines for our projects. And so for seawater decalination, they have an estimate of $40,290,000. You don't have to scroll down a couple of pages. And so the $40,290,000 was the price that Black and Beach has estimated for our project. And so I just, you know, use percentages to break out the client design, reduce the construction funding of that amount. And I'm gonna have the year needed projection from 2050. And that was essentially from the three-county study that Black and Beach had also done for when the seawater would be needed as a regional component for the valley. And so that's the timeline for that. And then with our global reuse, I'm gonna have it, you know, more or less towards the end of our, okay, 2028 to proceed to that task. And then the third one, urbanization is the purchase of water rights, which we would use local funds. Yes.
A little bit of my problem. What makes you think the state's gonna come down?
Oh, it means we're gonna request 100% through like a drinking water as well.
Total anticipated state funding.
Let's see. Total anticipated, that means we would request the entire project as a state revolving fund?
It seems like to me it'll say. This makes it sound like it's in the bank.
Oh.
But it's not in the bank.
Correct.
You're asking, you'll be asking for this.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. And state ownership means we would oversize the project and they would actually buy it, but we'd have to buy it back over time. But that's what that percentage is. And the third one is just their wording they use for purchasing water rights, which we would define as smaller credits over time, you know, using local funds. And that's, you know, how we've been keeping up with our demand over time, which I'll be continuing to do so. Yeah, I guess I don't know if there's any other questions on the region end surveys? Can we move on to the next one?
Fine. I'm good.
All right. The last bullet is the Laguna Vista Echo Park subdivision, which is, it's 23 acres. It's two lots. 10 acres is the ecotourism center that's already under construction with Noble. And then 13 acres is the part of the property that the town of Laguna Vista is getting better at. Keep owner, retain ownership of. Today, Laguna Vista still owns the entire subdivision. And of course, all of it's outside of our boundary. And so with this plat coming up, it sort of reignited a process of taking care of annexation and getting the entire 23 acres annexed, you know, while we're in the process of getting it platted. And so we did.
Does this government entity, do they have to be, do they have to annex it?
Well, I mean, it's, I guess, I mean, to provide water and sewer service, that answer is yes. So, you know, it would be good practice to be doing that. I mean, for our annexation policy, that they should be annexed to receive service.
And they annexation fees too?
Yeah. Well, yeah, to be, to receive service at the same rate as everybody else in the district, they should be.
I mean, that's. The fee is not, it is a.
Right.
Yeah, well, we approved, yeah, I think we approved to not charge the fees on the 10.2 acres.
Yeah. So for the 10.2 acres in the county side of the slot, so it's slot two, we've agreed for that annexation fee to be zero.
Right.
But for the 13 acres, we have to determine what kind of developments can happen out there. And then, I mean, what I've been directed on this.
Public or private development? Will it be public or private?
I would think that, I mean, the plans I've seen are, you know, mixed-use development.
I would imagine there'd be some private.
Yeah. So I would think they would, right now, where Lana Pooz is the town engineer and he's in the process of determining what that needs to be for his lift station sizing. And then we can use that. And then we can use that, you know, to give the beneficial benefit, determine how to assess water rights and system volumes. So that's, that's basically what I'm thinking.
All right, yeah, we're going to need some more information from the balance of the development.
I want to say, start doing the paperwork for the annexation, they can figure out how much they're going to be building and get all the information.
Yeah, I mean, with their, yeah, I'll be meeting with their engine on Friday morning and I can set that up. And this is.
Hey, Charles.
Yes.
Um, because, you know, we're a governmental agency, I guess, you know, we're private, but, but have some government, why wouldn't we, it just be the whole thing annexed at $0?
Well, it's our discretion. I mean, we're going to receive a petition, a request to, because the landowner initiates the petition to, for annexation, and then our board, you know, uses their discretion to accept it, you know, at the terms that they agree to.
You know, since it's a city asking us to do it, it's not like it's some developer who's putting up homes. I just don't, don't know why we'd be charging them. I don't know what our cost is. Certainly, we don't want to get stuck with cost, but if it's just a matter of, you know, one government agency to another, I'd hate to see us imposing fees that would be tough on Little Laguna Vista.
Right. You're correct on that, and I believe that the board will have an opportunity to vote on it at the next annexation procedure, when they come back to the board and present it. They'll still have that option to no charges on the other 13 acres.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing back on the next step and seeing how we can work with them. Thank you.
Yes.
And I guess, yeah, just to kind of go through the map again, just so we know where the find areas are at. It's, you know, the, this subdivision we're talking about is highlighted in green and the dark black line, well, at 100 is our, is our boundary. And the stripes though at the intersection of 510, they did their annexation. And then that bound, that line of south, you know, in the middle of Paradise Cove, that cuts down more or less just south of the abandoned railroad alignment, that's where our district boundary, you know, continues, or gets, gets the property south of 100 and continues in the forest though. But that's, you know, that's the way out of our district. The policy is just special reference, but for the report, you know, unless there's any comments.
Basically, in the letter we got from this guy, just reiterating what we already agreed to do, which is the 10.2 acres.
Right.
That's all he's talking about.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Let's move on to item eight, consider and discuss for possible approval, the purchase of a work order module from Tyler Technologies.
Gentlemen, we are trying to implement a new inventory system, but in, in the process, we have discovered that the new inventory system does not have the ability to assign cost to work orders, which presents a big problem for us, which if I go through with the implementation, there'll be a lot of extra manual work created. So it's not, it's not going to create any efficiencies, that's really going to create more work. So the solution that Tyler Technologies is offering us is a work order system. So work orders right now are currently being done on, on spreadsheets, on paperwork sheets, and, and this old inventory system. So I'm asking if, with your permission, we can purchase this so that it's within our budget, but it'll create a lot more efficiencies in that process.
I have a question.
Yes, yes, sir.
And maybe Orlando, or maybe you could answer it. I'm wondering if, it sounds like a software issue, right? Is this getting new software going to create a hardware issue? In other words, are our computers up to par to take on new software? Is the system for the district?
Yes, we have. Our foundation has to go to make, be able to take on this extra load.
Okay. All right. I'll second that. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Alboz, for all those in favor. All right, they are. Any opposed? Non-motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item number nine, consider and discuss for possible approval, the financial report for April 2020. I'm moved to approve. Actually, yeah, motion to acknowledge, motion. Acknowledged. Motion. No, what? Motion for approval made by Mr. Alboz, seconded by Mr. Houston, and all those in favor. They are. Any opposed? Non-motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to item number 10, consider and review the expenditures from May 16, 2020 through May 31, 2020. Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston. Seconded. Seconded acknowledgement by Mr. Alboz, for all those acknowledging. They are. Non-opposed. Thank you. All acknowledged. Item 11, I guess we need a motion to table this item. A motion to table by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. Alon, or all those in favor. All right, they are. Motion has been tabled. Thank you. Item 12, no action. And item 13, we'll adjourn this meeting at 6:07 PM. I want to thank everyone for their time. Please ask for your safety and security and be careful out there.